Which really wasn't required. And then, of course, the last step in the guidelines is if you did do the slab testing, did the soil gas meet IHSB acceptable levels? And in this case it did. You were at a very low level, way lower than what's accepted in the table. Okay, what I'd like to also do is talk a little bit about tetrafluorethylene, which is also referred to as perfluorethylene. Sometimes we hear it referred to as just PERC. And it's a very volatile colorless liquid. So, in its current state, it immediately likes to gravitate to the air. It's EPA estimates that currently there's somewhere around 271 million pounds of tetrafluorethylene still produced in the United States. About 7 million pounds finds its way into our environment in the air. And when it goes up into the air, it practically enters the air unchanged. It does go up as tetrafluorethylene. Approximately 75% of tetrafluorethylene is emitted in the air and the remainder is absorbed either in water, soils, or other materials. It's even absorbed into our foods. Now, there's been a lot of studies of ambient air in major cities. In particular, I show on here that there was actually a North Carolina Research Triangle Park was involved in this study. And in New York City, in ambient air, you can find as much as 1.4 to 72 micrograms per cubic meter of tetrafluorethylene just in the ambient air. In Houston, you see there, it's from non-detected to 30.5 micrograms per cubic meter. And in Detroit, 0 to 14.9 micrograms per cubic meter. It just kind of goes to show you, obviously, the larger cities, you're going to find a larger concentration of tetrafluorethylene in the ambient air. But for say, just US in general, EPA did a study for indoor air. And the median value of indoor air in our homes and buildings is close to 5 micrograms per cubic meter. Now, under your slab, you're at 6.55 micrograms per cubic meter. So, to put it in perspective, you're close to background levels as which you could even expect to see maybe in downtown Nashville. Now, there's been studies done. If you live close to a dry cleaners, it's very possible that the outdoor air in and around that dry cleaners, within a several mile radius, can be as high as 1,000 micrograms per cubic meter. So, almost 1,000 times greater than what you're seeing under the slab there at the maintenance building. Now, indoor air in homes, there's been numerous studies on taking dry cleaning garments home. And homes were measured without dry cleaning and with dry cleaning. And it's estimated that even the air in your home can reach 300 micrograms per cubic meter just from bringing dry cleaning home. In your car, I don't have this on here, but bringing dry cleaned clothes in your car and driving home, your car can reach over 3,000 micrograms per cubic meter just from the excess tetrafluorethylene that outgasses from your clothing. So, to put this in perspective, we're going to be exposed to PERC whether we like it or not. It's, we manufacture it in the United States. It's used in a lot of products. And, you know, we're just not going to get away from it. Just like a lot of other chemicals that we use in our society, we're going to be exposed because they're in our products that we use every day. As far as the safety there, I feel complete comfort in believing that the students and anybody working in that building is safe. And they're most likely to be exposed to levels of ambient air greater than what they're going to be exposed to even in the maintenance building. To give you just a comparison of another chemical, and I just throw this out there not to bore you, but perfluorethylene is not considered a carcinogen. It's a suspect carcinogen, but to date, it has not been listed as a carcinogen. Benzene, which we come in contact with every day, it's in our petroleum, it's in a lot of products, has a much, much lower acceptable indoor level than what tetrafluorethylene is. And it's just another example of that we cannot get away from being exposed to some hazardous chemicals in our society. We use them in products. We have outgassing and it's just something that we're going to be exposed to. Now, the way our government works, the EPA, they make guidelines to try to protect us from being exposed to chemicals. Those guidelines are filtered down to the states to mandate that they put in place certain regulations to protect us from those exposures. And D E N R and these guidelines for the inactive hazardous sites brands are very, very strict. They have an indoor air, acceptable indoor air concentration of 8.3 for residential and for frequently, frequent areas where students visit, which will be schools, day cares, et cetera. They have an acceptable indoor air concentration of 6, excuse me, it's 8.3, micrograms per cubic meter. So, you can see how strict even IHSBs is that they're approaching ambient air levels that are, say, just outside in the outdoor area. Talking with them, what they do is they interject all kinds of tests that have been done on humans, animals, and they try to come up with a value that they feel is acceptable for our indoor air. So, with that, Dr. Baldwin.
I think we have three profoams at the table on the same panel. On behalf of the superintendent of the board, we appreciate, we mean we appreciate, and we provide this information. This time, I'd like to open it up for any questions the board may have of individuals on the panel or the panel as a whole.
The board, what we'll do is we'll just go one board member at a time. And as we get through, we can go back. So, just ask one question, and we'll move on to the next person. And we'll just keep going until everyone's asked one question. So, that was Baldwin.
Please, please use the microphone and make sure you're clear. I have a question, I'm not sure who to address, but regarding the new well, monitoring well 26 that was just installed this month. How is the location for that well determined? I understand that the contaminant plume map could not accurately be drawn, probably because the wells had not been monitored on a regular basis in the past. So, it's hard to determine which way the contaminant might be flowing. So, how was that determined where monitoring well 26 was located?
I'm going to ask you, because, and I want you to address the conception of a plume map. Because I've heard that from a number of different sources that there is a plume map. It helps.
First off, our well did not install by a large oil company, it's all by Orkavis, which is a company that works for Schneider Electric, which owns the former Square D facility over there, is my understanding. So, it was another contractor that installed that well. So, I can't speak exactly, you know, what their rationale for replacing was. In general, my understanding that what they were trying to do was to get a well that was simply closer to the building between the MW15 wells that I refer to, figure number two in model four, and you can see where the MW15 wells are located. And they did have some VOC impact at that location. And so, their next step would have been simply to step closer to the building, the bottom kind of school building, to make sure that they didn't have VOC impact any closer. And so, MW26 was placed at a location that a drill rig could access. And so, that was a flat paved area, so they installed the well there. I think it's about 75 feet or so away from the building. And the fact that it came up below detection limits, their groundwater sample came up below detection limits for all of the compounds of concern, probably satisfied exactly what they were looking for was that they could confirm that there was no VOC impact of the groundwater any closer to the building than that. As to the, so that's MW26. Now, about the plume, more generally, the groundwater table is a little bit complicated in this area. And that's because there's a lot of bedrock that's very shallow, and then there's also silvery clay soil. It's referred to as sapryte on a lot of the maps that have been published by other consultants, Orkavis and the E R M. Sapryte is a word for weathered, bedrock that's been weathered in place and it turns into clays and sills and that sort of thing, soil basically. And so, they'll refer to the sapryte, aquifer, which is water, groundwater that's just in the soil later. And then also, they'll refer to the bedrock, aquifer, which is deeper, it's groundwater that's deeper into the crystalline bedrock, 100 feet down or so, something like that, 100 to 200 feet down. And from the square D to the champion properties, you have, so there's two different basic aquifers, the soil aquifer, the sapolytic aquifer, and the crystalline bedrock aquifer. And concentrations of PCE and TCE vary, you know, in one area, you might have higher concentrations in the soil aquifer, the sapolytic aquifer. In another area of their properties, you may have higher concentrations in the crystalline aquifer. And that makes it difficult to draw one single map that shows you where high concentrations are versus decreasing concentrations in a horizontal extent. In a simpler geology, in a simple, like where you have, say, in Florida, Florida's a nice, simple geology, because everything's sand. And there, you could have contamination in one spot. And then it flows out horizontally and vertically in sort of a uniform way. And you can draw a bullseye where you have a lead and then concentrate rains out from there that look really nice and uniform because that's the way it spreads out. But this geology is just more complex than that and the contaminants don't build themselves to an easy plume map.
Mr. Pliss? Can I just clarify? Me, Baldwin, some question, and I'd like you to answer it because I had some similar questions. I also, in sitting here and listening, I know that Schneider Electric had to present an action plan regarding the two NC Deaners. So, that plan, and that particular location of that well, was approved for North Carolina Deaners. So, that may be a little bit of a direct answer to you.
And just for clarification, Schneider Electric is who owns Square D's now?
That's Schneider Electric you would think of in terms of a former Square D company.
And Pliss? And this probably has already been answered, but in relation to MW26 and MW20D, if you went a given amount of feet, either direction from those wells, would you expect to find the same result or does that too, as a broad based statement?
Well, certainly, if you step closer to the building, which would also be farther away from the area of non-impact, which is back across the street, you'd expect the same result, non-detect, yes. And so, when you moved in this direction, you would expect to continue to find that. As you move back towards Beadham Road, if you went far enough, you would expect to find, you know, something, eight concentrations somewhere in the area between non-detect and what you see in MW15.
Ms. Franklin?
I'm curious what are the depths of the well?
The MW26 well, the one that's been most recently installed, it's totaled up, I believe it's 46 feet. So, it's in the, it's relative to that. The MW20D well around the corner from that, that's, it's over 100 feet, I think exactly it's up 100 feet.
Thank you.
Ms. Ryan?
I have a question. I think that question, thank you, and I'm either maybe you had the person, we were missing, in fact, I'm taking your time to be here today and provide some of this information. In terms of air quality, and I understand where the results are, I think, in that we're dealing with in one area, a very low amount. But in terms of air quality, if there were a problem, what does a, and this is not a scientific term, is a closed up building, quotation, versus a building that's old and people are coming in and out of on a continual basis? How does that impact those types of things or does it impact? The reason I ask, I work in real estate, I deal with radon mitigation periodically with homes. And I have seen where homes have tested hot, they've been closed up and vacant. And when they become non-vacant and not closed up and normal activity, people going in and out, but radon goes down. Now, I'm curious, is there any correlation with something like that in these types of air products or am I just way out there? It wouldn't be the first time I've been way out there, so the diectus tell me.
No, I think.
I have a question for Ray, too.
I think exactly what you're saying is true. We do testing in a lot of buildings and we do a lot of testing in hospitals. Hospitals are known to turn air over. They have, in some cases, 10 to 12 air changes in some areas of hospitals. And if they're not doing that, the reason they do that is they filter the air and they have fresh air coming in that they filter. And they're trying to relieve those areas of contaminants. So, the same thing would apply here. If, you know, if you have some kind of contamination of the subslab and you would completely close up that building and say rapid and pilot, try to make it as airtight as possible, you're most likely going to have some higher concentrations that'll occur inside that space versus if you have people coming through. And you have the doors open, you know, you have cracks in the windows where fresh air comes in and you have the HPC system working.
Mr. Craig?
Thank you all for your time today. In order to, let's assume years from now, all of a sudden, our monitoring wells reveal a huge increase, how hard is it to mitigate any of these contaminants? Is it similar to radon? Is it $100,000 or about that?
I'll take a shot at that. It's very similar to radon. And what you have to do is consider its source. And Ms. Ryan's question too, think about what is the source that it's coming from? And in this case, it's coming from the ground. And in most cases, radon would be coming from the ground also from the ground. And it's a matter of not confining and not trapping. And so, either very open windows or a better approach is to intercept it before it gets into the building. And with a radon system, you do that by ventilating the level of that building and intercepting. And that's really a pretty expensive solution for, should be the most effective thing probably, the easiest to use in ventilation.
Mr. Schindler, would you like to share your mind?
I'm going to just try to stay away from hypothetical questions because I don't like hypotheticals, whether it's attorney or individual, because they seem to kind of create issues which don't exist necessarily. I'm trying to understand what does it do, what you all are saying, from a big picture standpoint? You did. In essence, there were two different types of tests, one for groundwater and one for vapor. Is that accurate?
Yes, in general, what we're discussing here today are groundwater samples and soil vapor samples, which are air samples.
With regard to both of those types of samples, do any of the three of you see any concern for the health of individuals working and for potential students going to school in either any of the buildings that were tested on this site at 175 Big Marine? I don't see any concern.
Thank you. There's some question as to where or who contaminated the area across the street. As some of you may or may not know, there was another facility there before Square D. I believe it was Gorm Manufacturing, something like that. There's some.
Gorm Silver. Yeah, Gorm Silver.
Silver, yeah, thank you. So, there is some question as to when the contaminant entered the soil in that facility. Is there a general rule that you can say as to what we expect to see over the next 10 years? Should we, or is it just, there's no way to tell if those levels are going to go up and down across the street or in this side? Seeing as this could have gone back as early as the 1950s possibly, is there any way to tell based on experience and with our geology of this area being what it is? Is there a way to, should we see things decrease, increase, or could it fluctuate?
The area where Square D was located and in neighboring Champion facility, I look at figure one, now the former Square D facility, their groundwater, depth to groundwater measurements that these consultants have done on those facilities going back to the 1990s. So, they have a pretty clear idea of what direction groundwater is flowing and in general, it's flowing to the north from Square D.
Away from our building?
Well, away from the building and an area of, if groundwater is flowing in that direction in general, then it's flowing away from what is right behind me, probably to the side. We call it cross gradient or side gradient directions. And so, there might be a little bit of component of flow in that direction, but in general, not a lot. And that's probably the reason that you see some amount of VOC concentrations in the MW15 wells. But you would see, you would tend to see more increases north of Square D. And so, as you just were alluding to, that the impact that's over there has probably been in place for tens of years. And so, based on experience, now, I always want to give numbers in terms of, you know, what a projection might be, but based on experience, if it's been there for that long, the concentrations that you're seeing in MW15 in general probably represents something that's kind of steady state at this point. And so, you wouldn't expect to see big jumps in the concentration. Now, it fluctuates, you know, some tens of, you know, parts per billion, you know, one sample to the other. But in general, I wouldn't expect to see big jumps going in the future, 10 years from now or something like that. I expect that we're seeing pretty much what's going to be there. Now, towards Champion, towards the champion property, you may see higher concentrations over there, but we're not talking about that property.
Ms. Baldwin?
I suppose this is another sort of follow-up to what Mr. Reinhardt just said. Is there, I mean, there's no way to know for sure, but could there possibly be tanks buried with containing contaminants that could rust through? I suppose after, some of these are maybe 30-year life for these tanks, that they could start to rust, which would be about now. I mean, I don't know if there's anything D E N R is doing to check for them on the other properties. If they have concerns about the original Square D property, I haven't heard if there's going to be more testing on that property. The people who are in that office park over there, Schneider Electric and Census Bureau, what kind of information are they getting? Does anybody know? I don't know why NC D E N R is not here, if they were invited to be on the panel or not. But I guess my question would probably be more to NC D E N R or somebody, a Square D Schneider Electric representative, about what's being done over there that could affect us here, if they're looking for these underground, perhaps underground tanks, I don't know.
I think, again, what we're looking at, what we looked at for our study was this property and this building and focused on, were there any VOC impacts that looked like it would impact the health of this building in terms of what might still be over at the other properties? That's not something that we would generally.
Ms. Pliss?
I'm curious.
Mr. Campbell's not the person I'd ask this question of, so I might ask you all. But I tried to get it cleared up before it got to me. You all work and have worked for years in this area, is that, and I mean this area in Washington, Oklahoma, Bubba County area, is that right?
That's correct.
Sorry, I didn't look for that. I know you didn't, Mr. Man.
Man.
Man, sorry. Mr. Man, I know you indicated that you all did not, or that you didn't look at information from the other sites other than what was necessary to prepare for this study. But in your experience in working in this area, are you aware from any outside knowledge of any indications that there are tanks of hazardous chemicals buried on the side across the street from this facility? Is there anything that would cause you to believe that that is?
Well, that's what I'm asking, exactly, if you have any knowledge. Okay. Thanks.
Obviously, as you say, we've gone beyond the recommendations that are set forth by our state government and going, and I think that it was money well spent. But my question is, do you think that we would have any additional benefit by drilling more vapor testing holes in the maintenance facility or any other shallow or deep wells closer or around our facility, maybe more in, I guess, the southern direction, I guess is the best way to put it? Do you guys see any benefit at this point of doing any more testing? Or do you think that we should just monitor what we have, obviously, what we have today and make sure that those levels don't change over the course of time?
I think what you're going to do as far as your monitor plan, your four-year monitor plan on the subslab, you've got three locations. And my feeling is that if the conditions worsen, that you're going to see some results out of those three locations. And you're also going to be monitoring groundwater wells, which are on that side of the building towards the wells that you do know have some contamination. So, I think if you see anything that would occur in those, that, I think what your monitor plan is set up to do, I think is good. And I think that if there was any plume coming that direction or any contamination coming that direction, I think you're going to pick it up either in the subslab or your monitoring wells.
Thank you. Ms. Baldwin?
My question's for Dr. Baldwin, I'm sorry. My previous question, was NC D E N R invited to be on the panel as well as Schneider Electric representative?
No, they were not. They were for, and you've got to realize that we went beyond D E N R and Schneider Electric. We made the decision that we were going to take the next step that would not have even been required from NC D E N R. The action plan, I go back to your original question and the second question, I think your answer is that the action plan has been agreed upon by Schneider Electric through the me and NC Deaner. Because that action plan includes 128 Deaner Road, which you had questions about. All of that is included in that action plan. And that's something you certainly could ask NC Deaner for. But the focus of this particular work session and the charge given to me by the board was our facility here on 175.
I also thought we really didn't have a timeline. I was about to follow up on my previous question. I haven't seen any information about the timeline as far as it's developing, and I don't believe we have copies of that action plan, is that correct?
The copies of the action plan are with NC Deaner and the action plan was submitted by Schneider Electric. What we did, once again, what we did was essentially take control of our situation and test beyond what was even required of NC Deaner. We did not need to have permission from North Carolina Deaner to take the next step. We took that because my feeling was the board wanted us to be proactive and to take the next step to do the best job that we possibly could to ensure the same.
Mr. Pelletus?
I will go.
Ms. Franklin?
I have my own question.
Mr. Schadman?
Maybe you can answer this. Maybe. As far as any requirements of NC Deaner related to this site, 75 Deaner Road, those requirements by NC Deaner are being satisfied by the, by Schneider Electric through their action plan. Is that your understanding?
Their installation of NW26, well, if you can give us a sample of their water there, it might be being satisfied in the most recent requirements.
I don't have any more questions, Ms. Baldwin. Go ahead.
Okay. I guess still for maybe historical purposes and also to get a bigger understanding of the whole picture, I thought we were going to have a timeline, we're going to have a review of what would happen.
We are, we're going to be talking about.
Is that another question that you said?
Well, it's on the agenda.
Oh, I see. I didn't know that.
I would ask if you have any more questions for these gentlemen?
Okay, I do. I think it was Mr. Ledes, I'm not sure, mentioned about comparing contaminants. Have you mentioned benzene and petroleum? And maybe this question is also from out in environmental spirit too. We had an oil spill at Piska Elementary School two years ago. I was not, I think I was driving, I might have been the group that did the tests there. But was benzene something, is that something that could be in fuel oil too as well and a concern for those students and staff at that school?
Ms. Baldwin, I would appreciate that we keep on the subject. I mean, I understand the concern that Piska Elementary, but it's really not what we're dealing with today. I'd really like these gentlemen to ask, answer questions about what we're dealing with today so that as soon as I mention that, they're able to answer the questions that we have. And if you have some questions about Piska Elementary School, we can address it later.
Well, I just think the board, you know, we were talking for that hazardous side as well. And there wasn't mention of benzene. I don't know if you maybe were involved with that particular side, or if you could address what contaminants might be in the fuel oil spill there, there was a couple thousand gallons.
Here again, we're talking about this property. If you'd like to ask the gentleman afterwards about, you know, about this, if you want to ask someone else, I appreciate if we just stayed on this property here today. This is what's on the agenda and just would like to stay on the subject right now.
I just want to clarify with Mr. Man, the testing that you did, you said follow the NC Deaner guidelines. There wasn't any, no, none of the steps were skipped. We followed every step, okay? Thank you. And you also mentioned the fact that a one-time testing, you know, doesn't show what we might need to see over time, and that's why you suggested that we have a monitoring plan in place. Is it typical that seasonally even, that the results can change quarterly, for example, depending on the season of the year?
There is a potential for some fluctuation, and that is the reason that we recommended some further sampling to confirm that nothing showed up beyond what we saw in the maintenance area. We would not recommend any further for the sensible area just because with four samples and having been detected, it's a good thing.
And you feel confident that we don't need to do that sort of testing in any other locations in the building for protection of other staff, not just the proposed gent site?
Based on the impact that has been observed in the wells closest to the Bunkin County School building, the NW15 wells had, relative to some of the other wells across the street, they had relatively high concentrations of the compounds that were of interest here. Wells that were to the south on the Square D property had lesser concentrations. And so for that reason, the area closest to NW15 was of interest rather than, let's say, areas to the, to the south part of the Bunkin County building. So the northwest corner where, so far you're seeing the density of wells in NW15, NW26, and 20, that's why the, you know, we installed our SL3 location over there because that seems to be the most likely point that you would see some sort of impact.
Board members, is there any other questions?
I had another question for Dr. Baldwin. Well, it's maybe answered later, I'm sorry, but the timeline, you just brought up where the location of the maintenance building, and I didn't know if that building had ever been tested in the past before it was built, was there testing done, but that may be part of the timeline.
I think that's probably a question we can answer in a few minutes. Here again, if you have any more questions for the gentleman. Again, I would just like to say thank you for being here and taking your time to help explain this, I know it's been very helpful. Ms. Baldwin, do you have any more questions?
All right. Ms. Baldwin?
Mr. Chair, I want to give a five-minute break. We have, we have, we have all the questions, and then I'll take back to that.
I'm kind of excited. I can't get out of this room. I've got to pick this dial number up. I was going to do some.
You quoted the recommendation from Mr. Man to develop a process for monitoring as a, and I want to term it this way, as a future precaution against migration of VOC, and that's, I think it's playing incentive, volatile organic compounds. Any migration of vapors from the former Square D and Champion sites across the street. He also talked about a four-year timetable. It's been structured, incorporates both groundwater monitoring, that monitoring wells are in place in W26 and 20D, in addition to the vapor sampling at the designated sites. And that will also include some additional sub slab samples that would be taken as well. I fully support this recommendation. I think that by doing that, we're sending a statement that I truly believe, since the first concern came our way, that we have strongly taken the stance that it is our primary responsibility to ensure our students, our parents, and our staff. And certainly, and I know a lot of this, a lot has been discussed about the, about the future of STEM High School. And I will tell you that there is no doubt in my mind that Bunkin County Schools is moving in the right direction in terms of providing to our students and our school communities a STEM High School. I think if we're serious about 21st century education and we have any, any knowledge of what the crystal ball shows in terms of what's needed, this STEM High School is absolutely crucial. But I want to clarify this, that when the concern came my way, this isn't about STEM High School. This is about the thirty students that we've currently got in this building. It's about the hundred and fifty staff members that work in this building every single day. That's where the focus needs to be. I certainly would not want to think that there is any issue, and I use the term agenda, that's out there in terms of looking at this particular situation of concern strictly related to a future STEM High School. Because the concern is the environmental safety of our employees and our kids inside this building right now. So I want to say that loud and clear, and I don't want it to get lost in an agenda. That's not what we're about. That's not what this system's about. Regardless of who sits in the chair as superintendent for this Bunkin County School system.
Dr. Baldwin, when did you become the superintendent and why are you suddenly?
Dr. Baldwin, when did you become the superintendent and why are you suddenly at work when I brought it up?
You're out of order.
I apologize for that. This is unbelievable.
Ms. Baldwin, you're out of order.
My simple statement is this, that regardless, whatever the leadership in this school system is, the STEM High School, it would be a crime for us not to pursue the STEM High School program and the opportunity for all our kids simply so. So my recommendation strongly parallels with the monitoring system that Mr. Mahan has described to you. It's in my intent to bring this recommendation to you for the four-year monitoring plan in a formal sense for your approval on the December 6th, 4th. I feel strongly enough that I think it's the right thing to do, bringing it to you next Thursday. However, I think we try our very best to provide information and give you time to digest that information. So we call this is the timeline being so close. That's why when I'm saying at this point in time, is that recommendation will come to you on December 6th. As you may also recall, there was a board work session that was scheduled on August 2nd. And the purpose of that, and for the public, and all videos available, welcome to, to go back and listen to it, because we provided a pretty solid historical timeline. And that was from an environmental perspective, once again on 175 Bingham Road campus. And it's by intent to focus on the initial purchase of this property that occurred in June of 1989 by the Board of Education as they purchased this property from the former Square D Company. Relative to this purchase, a series of environmental tests and accompanying mitigation took place. In your folder, you have a folder in front of you, and inside there, that folder, there are seven documents. I'm going to take you through that sequence of documents because I think it provides you with a fairly solid timeline concerning the decision of purchase and what was done to ensure that the property that was purchased was safe for buildings to house, students, and staff. The first document that you have is a copy of the April 13th. That is a purchase order that was written to Law Environmental. That is for a preliminary site assessment and chemical screening of the property. And you're going to see through these documents that this particular property, 175 Bingham Road, is referenced as Square D Plant Number Two. 128th Bingham Road. And that particular portion of the plant is referenced as Square D Plant Number One. You're going to see that throughout these documents. The cost for this assessment, again, this is April 13th, and it was for work to begin on April 17th, 1989, was $19,000, it's $19,019. That was the cost. Again, this, I'm giving you this as proof. And indeed, there was a contract for chemical screening to take place prior to the purchase. In other words, the buyer, Bunkin County Schools, wanted to make sure that this property was safe prior to purchase. Just for reference, at the top right-hand corner, I got a little bit out of sequence with numbers, I apologize, but you will see that later, this is a picture of the purchase. Second document is dated May 16th, 1989. And that reveals to the owner, again, the owner being Square D, the results of that assessment and chemical screening by Law Environmental. And if you look through that document, you're going to see that there were recommendations made by Law Environmental. And pretty basic recommendations. Number one, removal of all industrial waste lines and pumps leading from Plant One, again, on 128th to Plant Two, 175. Removal of the acid neutralization tank system. Scaling and abandoning of drains in the diecast room. Sealing of concrete within areas where industrial solvents were present. And it's interesting to note that also what was included was a reference to the future, which in my opinion left the door open. Removal and disposal of contaminated soils or materials that were yet to be detected. I am not an attorney, but based upon what I read, again, it appears to me there was a clear evidence of due diligence that was put in place by the Bunkin County Board of Education at the time to purchase property that would be safe. The third document is from Law Environmental. And that's dated June 14th, again, 1989. And it specifies to our Board Attorney, at the time, there's Walter Curry, who I might add is in our audience today. And that specifies the specific chemical analysis that was done on June 9th of backfield soil and water that's associated with the PVC drainage pipe that ran from Square D Plant Number Two to Plant Number One. Now, you look through this documentation, you're going to see that that reference continues to go to the PVC pipe that ran from Plant One to Plant Two. Now, what was it? The PVC drainage pipe, it was installed in the early 1980s. And it was used to transport liquids from 175 Bingham Road, Plant Number Two, to a waste treatment plant that was located in Plant Number One. And again, there's continued reference to this PVC pipe. Quite a bit of testing that's not, that's done not only of the pipe and its contents, but the soil around. The fourth document states, you can just a little time to read through that because it's a fairly short piece of document. It is from Square D to the Bunkin County School Board. And essentially what it says is that the PVC pipe that was in question was clean, pressure-tested for leaks. And Square D believes that there are no environmental violations that exist. And that was dated on June 16th. And in essence, what takes place, Mr. Curry can help me with this because you were there. The pipe was clean, tested, and sealed. The next document, Document Five, that was dated on June 16th, 1989. And it is an escrow and indemnity agreement. Essentially a contract between Bunkin County Schools and the Square D Company. And it included, in escrow, the requirement for the sum of $100,000. $94,000 of that to be released to Square D, once the PVC pipe environment, environmental issue was resolved. So once again, focus placed on that PVC pipe. Due diligence. This contract, or is Curry, have you ever read this contract? I'm not sure. But this contract certainly represents due diligence on the part of the Bunkin County Board of Education because they're requiring in escrow, a considerable amount of money, certainly in 1989, to be held until that environmental issue was appropriately taken care of. $8,000 was actually held in escrow over a boiler control concern. Mr. Curry, I'm assuming that that was taken care of as well. There was a lack of control at that point. And it's important to realize that at this time now, again, this was, this was June 16th, both Bunkin County Schools and the Square D Plant had stated a mutual intent to close on the sale and purchase of the property. However, as protection again, this contract, escrow, was put in place. A sixth document notes that chemical tests were done by the SNR Company. But they were done in consultation with Law Environmental. Law Environmental represented the environmental test analysis for Bunkin County Schools. Thank goodness for communication, Rick. Thank you, Luke Plauch. In consultation with Law Environmental. So Law Environmental represented Bunkin County Schools. SNR provided the same function and representation for Square D. So what they state in this particular document is that there were tests that were done on June, July 27th and August 8th, beginning of 1989. And that those tests revealed below detectable limits. You brought it to the 20th, 21st century, it would have been non-detectable. And that analysis was done specifically on the pipelines, rich water, what ran through the pipeline, the surrounding soil sample, and the pipe itself. And you can see that Square D, at this point in time, believes that they have fulfilled the requirements that were made by Bunkin County School through Law Environmental. So they're requesting the $92,000. The final document that I have in your packet is dated October 24th. And Square D, once again, requests the escrow amount because it believes that it fulfilled the environmental conditions that were placed in the contract. And if you read a little further, you'll see that there was actually a separate issue involving a cooling tower. I can tell you that I spoke with, when I spoke with Marshall Roberts, who is a former, or former school, art, K, facility director. And Mr. Roberts recalled very clearly that that cooling tower was actually removed and replaced. In fact, I think there's a lot to you wrong aboard when that took place. They identified this as an issue, but clearly they're saying that that is, that's separate to the requirements for the $92,000 escrow. Now, once again, it's of my opinion that these documents clearly provide the evidence that at the onset of the purchase of this property, this purchasing process of Bunkin County Schools, that due diligence was carried out each step away. I think very similar to how we addressed this issue since the concerns first came to light. The bottom line is that a two-faced environmental state, it was conducted, and it specifically centered on contents within a PVC drainage pipe. The surrounding soil materials and the pipe itself. These issues were identified, addressed, and the resulting analysis after the removal and cleanup represented a clean slot, uh, clean sock. And that goes back in reference to a question Mrs. Baldwin had regarding, was this, at the time of the purchase, was this particular side, the sun? I might add that that last analysis, now remember that although the document states it was by the company hired through Square D, it was done in partnership or in consultation with the company that represented Bunkin County Schools. I referenced the impact of the former Square D and Channing finishing plants on our 175 Bingham Road address. I did that at the August 2nd work session. I've stated once again, while we've always been on city water, at that presentation, I noted that a total of four groundwater monitoring wells were drilled on our property in the 90s, 1990 to 1995. I'll also say publicly that we can find no evidence that there was, that we were ever apprised of our buildings being a safety or public health concern. And from our standpoint, as I sit here at this point in time, there was no issues in the 90s and subsequently, no issue now. I would also reference an email that was sent from Miss Donna DeCarlo, or trying to Dean her. It was dated January, February, March 15th in response to a question of a board member. And she states, again, this is NC Dean, states, "At this point, we do not know if there is contamination with 175 being location." And I say that and I reference that because this is March 15th, 2012. Clearly what we're hearing from NC Dean is they're not aware of an issue here on 175. At this point in time, if you have questions, Mr. Chair.
Good. Board, Ms. Baldwin will start with you.
I apologize for interrupting earlier. I guess my concern was that you've been in the central office for maybe six years and were never concerned before about the safety of the employees until I contacted Dean her and found out all this information.
If I can answer that.
Mr. Chair.
That was a very unfair statement. The board is, I'll say that for sure, but yes.
You know, I, I want to be respectful when I say this, but I think that's extremely disrespectful and extremely invalid to look at me and make a reference that as superintendent, I have no concern for the safety of our staff. If there is one area that I think I have brought to Bunkin County Schools in my tenure as both associate superintendent and superintendent is exactly opposite, and that is safe school. I'd be glad to provide 20 emergency management, law enforcement, fire officials to come in this room and state them. And again, I respectfully. And again, I respectfully, though that's your opinion, but respectfully, I totally deny that. I think that's totally unfair.
I was referencing safety as regards to the contamination on the property. And it's not your fault. I mean, you inherited this problem from other superintendents who did nothing to test the air quality in the building, even though employees requested that air quality be tested back in the 90s, which is before you were here, of course. But it's just amazing to me that this problem has never been addressed until this year. I'm concerned, we all have copies of a memo from March 15th of 1990 that was, I borrowed the email from Deener to all board members when I received it as well. And the memo, this is only six months, actually, I'm sorry, nine months after the purchase of the property. And in this nine-month gap, we don't have information on, they had already drilled 61 ore holes. They had done significant, I'm reading from the memo, significant contaminants when estimated at a depth of 40 to 50 feet with hazardous materials, and they go on to say arsenic, mercury, lead, and chlorine. So, this was only nine months later already, these 61 bore holes have been drilled. This was a meeting at Square D with some people. So, I'm trying to figure, I cannot quite figure out how all this happened. Where would they, why would they be drilling bore holes if the reports said there wasn't any problems? Why don't we have a copy of the 1989 environmental study? But we have all the other copies.
One of the times.
We have all this other documentation from 1989. I would think the study would have been, so we're witness. Have you exhausted all avenues for finding that study?
Perhaps Mr. Campbell may be the best.
Board members, we've had extensive communications on this, and especially when you, Ms. Baldwin, the environmental site assessments that were done. The first one was a Phase One, which is kind of a paper review. Is there any reason for you to make a concern? Phase Two is when you actually start sampling things. And Phase Two results were the ones that were the chemical analysis that came back to the board at that time, back in 1989. We have looked for the studies, Phase One and Phase Two studies. The county has looked in their records, the school board has looked here at the central office, the maintenance department has looked for them. We contacted environmental, Law Environmental, to see if they had copies of them. We contacted their Wilmington office. We even called one of the four engineers that wrote the report that is now retired, that will be shot at CTE, or anything like that. We did not do that because we felt like the reports had something in them that you don't know. The reports clearly identified the chemical analysis for the pipe and the soil testing that was done, but we still wanted to find those reports. And I will apologize that we can't find those reports. When we formed our law firm, we took over files that went Iron Mountain. I was in high school when these Phase One and Phase Two studies were done. When our law firm took over the files, we didn't take physical possession of them. The account was just transferred to our firm. We immediately contacted Iron Mountain. We pulled every box that related to Square D, to the central office purchase, to anything. We looked through all of those files, could not find a copy. Unfortunately, Iron Mountain bought the account from another company, and they do not have records from that company of any attorney that they have remitted the boxes from storage. Now, why would an attorney remove the boxes from storage? Very simply, the law firm we left has over 30 attorneys, does real estate deals, has had numerous real estate deals across the street. It's entirely possible that at some point, an attorney wanted to see information about the Square D site who pulled the files. Mr. Curry has looked through those file boxes. My former partners looked through all of those file boxes. And I don't say this because I feel like there's something that needs to be explained. I want you to know the links we went to to try to find the Phase One and Phase Two because we like them to be front and center. Bottom line is, they're not in existence anymore. We don't have them. No, they were not treated. No, they were not destroyed. No, I have never personally ever seen them. Mr. Curry certainly remembers them, but we cannot find them in any of the files. And in fact, somewhat unfortunate, I know that was, after all this was disclosed numerous times, Ms. Baldwin even went to Environmental, Law Environmental, and talked to one of the managing partners of the firm within the last few weeks, and he came to my office and just reiterated that he had told you, but no, they do not have them, they don't keep them. He contacted the Wilmington office, they don't have them. There is no cover-up. I'm sorry, we can't find them, but we do know exactly what the studies revealed. As far as the nine-month gap, what, and again, Mr. Curry's here, if you want to hear it straight from the horse's mouth, so to speak, no disrespect, Mr. Curry. But the deal was done, the real estate transaction was closed. What we now know, through getting documents from Mooresville, North Carolina, was that some nine-month later, there was a spill across the street. We can find no evidence of anyone coming over here and telling anyone with Board of Education about the spill. It was handled by Square D, it was handled by Deener. Mr. Curry himself has talked to every former superintendent. He's also talked to every former maintenance director. Yes, there were wells dug up on the road. We've been unable to find who gave permission to dig the well. But the bottom line is, no one, including the state of North Carolina, told the Board of Education that there was any health concern. And as Dr. Baldwin says, luckily, we now know there has been no health concern at 175. There is no health concern at 175. There's things that need to be monitored, and this is a very serious matter, absolutely. But there is no gap, again, no conspiracy, no cover-up. There was a spill across the street, it was handled by Snyder and Deener, and no one ever came to the Board of Education that we can find in any way, shape, or form and said, "You have a health problem over here." In fact, much the contrary, they said, "Can we dig wells?" They did testing, and none of those wells have ever acquired any kind of remediation or action whatsoever. So, I think it's probably that we know all the information we know now, but at the time, there was a meeting with the board. Mr. Curry, anything you want to add to that?
Yes, it is. I think it's important to understand when you look at the letter from the law environmental on June 14th, '89, that you have in your proposals, I believe. That letter is really the summary and the end result of both the Phase One and the Phase Two assessments. So, really, whether or not we physically have the Phase One and Phase Two report, because the good point, you've got the summary that everybody does have a record of, and that's all you're really interested in, is what was the bottom line? You've got the bottom line, just there.
Present for actions of the general works, pretty much.
Well, I just wanted to follow that up. If we do look at this, I mean, you see 455 parts per million TC, I know, and nobody's here that was a part of the board at the time. But that was exceptionally high level considering the safe level is high. I wanted to bring up, I'm not sure why Mr. Campbell referred to a cover-up or conspiracy. That has never been mentioned before. I don't really know where that implication came from.
Not, I just want to clarify that was 455 was in the water.
Right, in the water.
Right, and that's why, that's why it was.
I want to clarify, in the water, in the pipe, not groundwater. So, let's not confuse water, that Law Environmental, '89, in the pipe, with groundwater that we're talking about.
Mr. Plas, do you have any questions, comments you'd like to make?
Today, we have, we've been given a clean bill of health. So, regardless of what happened in 1989, seems to be irrelevant to me. We've been given a clean bill of health, and we have a plan going forward. Sorry. And we have a plan going forward. I think we're beginning.
Ms. Franklin.
Yes. I want to respond to what Ms. Baldwin said about the air quality and Dr. Baldwin not caring about the safety and well-being of his employees. While I've worked with Dr. Baldwin, I worked for some other superintendents when all of this was going on. And I personally saw and witnessed our maintenance department checking the air in this building. I also personally witnessed them changing the air filters in this building. And subsequent to that, we bought a new chiller. That indicates to me that previous superintendents and people in charge have been very mindful of the safety and well-being of the people in this building, and I was one of them. And the actions that I just conveyed to you were results of complaints that had come from employees. It seems to me that that is significant.
Ms. Franklin, if I could just ask Mr. Fox, because we've had quite a bit of discussion about this, and along with the request for timeline, maybe you can give the board some reference from time.
As Ms. Franklin said, we have switched to the type of filtering system that we did in this building. It used to be just basically a two-inch filter. We switched to a thing called Merv 7. It's an anti-microbial filter that catches better particulates, cleans up your duct system, does a much better job. When it first came along, I remember some problems here with cooling in this facility, along with heating problems. Since that time, I think it's around 2005, 2006, we replaced the chiller. That is the main component for cooling for this entire facility. Up till, I'd say, the last five years, I've had very, very, very few complaints from this building. Very few complaints of anything, heating and cooling. We do have to keep in mind that we have a board policy for temperature control, and we switch over it one time a year. Now, that does become a problem for some folks because of the design of the system. You either have hot water or you have chill water in the building. Certain times of the year, people get hot, you're still in heating mode, you haven't switched to cooling, and vice versa. But as Ms. Franklin said, we did a good job. We do change our filters quarterly. Everything here is on preventive maintenance program. And I had very few complaints from individuals in this facility.
And this was all changed over in, you said, 2005?
Around 2005, 2006 is when we did the chiller. We put in a new filtering process. I actually went with Dr. Page, who was an associate superintendent to Georgia.
Which was then, about when?
Probably 99, 2000, somewhere in that neighborhood. And we started a different program with a different type of product. And did a much better job of cleaning up. I think our custodian staff did a much better job, too. So, I feel like this facility has definitely been, you know, healthy.
Mr. Baldwin.
I would just appreciate all the information, and one opportunity to be able to read through it. That's just what I'm trying to do.
I was just going to echo what Dusty said. I mean, the purpose, I thought, of the meeting today was to kind of evaluate where we are today with this building. And I feel comfortable after hearing from these experts that we don't have a problem. I'm ready to move on. I find a lot of times we've spent on this already, and we have good information. You help me out, see reasons for explaining.
Just a couple of brief comments. I appreciate the fact that there was a attack on Dr. Baldwin's concern for safety of individuals in this building, and that apparent is the fact that all of that and then that was transferred to prior superintendents, which I don't think is an accurate reflection because it was an indication that there was a problem that had not been addressed. And I have not yet seen a problem that has not been addressed. In fact, based upon the information that we've received today, the most relevant thing I've heard is that, and it really was kind of summarized in this report that one of the gentlemen referenced, it was a one-page with the Deener IASB requirements. But the thing that's most telling is, there was no testing, or no additional testing necessary as it relates to anything with regard to labor in this building, but we did it anyway, found nothing of any protective substance. Even the sub-slab testing was so far below anything, even in the maintenance department, that it did not reveal anything of any concern. So, this indication that there is a problem, that someone had failed to identify, just seems to be basis. If I have any questions, thank you.
As I stated before, certainly, none of us were on the board whenever this property was purchased. Dr. Baldwin was not the superintendent when this property was purchased. Were you employed at Buckland County Schools when it was purchased, or were you still coaching? But I was in high school whenever they bought it. So, I think it's unfortunate where our building is located. You know, certainly, if I had my pick, I wouldn't want to be next to a site that had issues. Obviously, there's issues coming from that area. And we've certainly seen the studies that show that we have one corner of our property that is obviously affected to a certain degree by what's happened at the old Square D facility. I think the most important thing that we're here for today is what the three gentlemen talked to us about. I think our concern is what's happening today and what we should expect five, 10, 15 years down the road. And if we, if that contaminant moves into this building and we get detectable levels, I think the gentleman said we felt like that we could, that something would be handled, could be mitigated. You know, short of pulling up from this site and moving somewhere else where we can find, I think this property has 60 acres. Close. 60 acres with the square footage that we need to operate. And it's not just the students, it's everyone. You know, I certainly, if I felt uncomfortable having my wife or kids in this building, I think we should shut the whole building down and move on. But while it would be nice to have that report, to see kind of what the folks were thinking in 1989, I think that we have to concentrate on what's happening today, and that we have to move forward with the information that we have, if we're going to stay here in this building, if we're going to renovate this building, or if we're going to try to find another location and move. I feel pretty comfortable, I really appreciate the comparisons that, was it Mr. Baldwin?
Mr. Baldwin.
Yeah, gave us, and talked about, you know, what we're exposed to on a daily basis, just in life. While we certainly don't want to be exposed to those things, unfortunately, it's a, I'm sure that with the chemicals my wife uses in our house, we would probably fail. But also, I mean, a lot of these same things are found in the cleaning solutions that we use at our home. And they're certainly used in a lot of the solutions that are used here, I'm sure, with the regular cleaning that goes on with our school, not all our schools, quite honestly. And while I think it's certainly, we should try to do everything we can to make sure everyone is safe and try to lessen any of these hazards that we have. Unfortunately, it's part of the world that we live in now. And I would, I would say, dare say that if you went into the average home inside a large metropolitan city, you'd probably find levels higher than what we're seeing here. And I do appreciate all the information, the background information that's given to us. I think, short of rounding up all the board members that were on the board at that time and having them come in here and explain what happened, I think we have to look at our situation now and figure out what we're going to do in the future.
Thanks, Bob. I do agree with what you said, that as a board member with the responsibility for general control and supervision of all school system activities, I feel like we are responsible for any liabilities in the past as well. So, it's important for us to have a handle on that historical perspective and know that we do have all the information we possibly could have. And I need to know, Brunel-Lammon, that company was also contacted with regard to the 1989 environmental study.
Yes, they took over, and they did not have them. We have called everybody we can pick up on Planet Earth. Please don't hesitate to call me or email me. You can text anybody else, we'll call them. We love contacting them.
What was the name of that gentleman, Ms. Baldwin?
I think it's Brunel-Lammon.
Brunel-Lammon.
B-A?
B-U, B-R-U.
B U, B R U, N E L L.
B U R?
I think it's B U N E L L.
Okay. So we continue.
Yes, I'm concerned, looking at the big picture, about the approach to this whole issue. And I don't want to see this happen in the future, where we just said, we wait. It appears in the past that no one was proactive, and nobody asked questions about the monitoring wells and what kind of levels. Just because Deaner didn't give, hand us the data on Silver Platter or Square D, that didn't mean that the school system itself couldn't ask questions about it and want to know, you know, the possible hazards to the staff and students here. So I'm just proposing that we could look at it from that perspective in the future. How can we, is there any policy we could implement to make sure that we are always taking a proactive stance, not only in this issue, but others as well? Like I mentioned, the oil spill that nobody even bothered to tell me about as a new board member. You know, there are lots of situations that are happening, and I don't feel like, you know, the board knows about them necessarily, or that they're being handled in a proactive manner. We also have the issue now with the permits and inspection. We still have a meeting. But this is part of the big picture of being proactive.
This is not, this is not the forum for all of your complaints, okay? We're talking about.
Those are not complaints, those are liabilities the board has to bear.
Ms. Baldwin, if you have something you want to talk about as a result of the recent test, we'll talk about it. We're not talking about anything else.
I do, I'm just, okay, about the recent test, this came about because a board member had to go to Deaner and say, what in the world is going on? Why are we on a hazardous waste list? Why as a board member do I not know about this? Then when a board member goes to the superintendent and asks him to investigate, and never hears back, you know, there's something wrong with the process, is what I'm talking about, and that we need to look into fixing the process. We need to be a proactive board, concerned about the safety of our students and staff, and our liabilities as a board, and not go on a witch hunt after a board member just because she asked questions, and because she went to Deaner to ask them if this was even a concern she should press to the superintendent. I, I'm really tired of being crucified as a messenger here, because the other board members do not want to go and ask questions. They just want, but I have the floor. I have the floor. I have the floor.
Ms. Franklin?
Well, I am crazy, Ben. Why are you all, you're just sitting here?
You want to talk about the environmental first? We're talking about the environmental study, and then we'll move on. If we can't do it in a very common-syllable manner, we're going to stop, and the meeting and we're going to move on. Okay?
Okay, let me continue about this environmental hazard. I'm trying to describe a pattern to you here.
Well, you're not talking about, you've gotten off the.
Again, we still don't want to address the hard question.
Ms. Baldwin?
That is not on topic, this is a hard question.
We are talking about the recent test results. We're not talking about policy, and we're not talking about board procedures.
Well, I hope this is a consideration for the future, that we can turn this corner and try to be proactive about issues and be open and transparent.
Enough! How many times, or how many different ways do I have to say it?
I did have the floor, according to.
Well, I just thought, and if anyone else has anything else to say, they'd like to say about the environmental study, we're going to talk about it. If not, meeting is over.
I have Mr. Campbell's opinion.
The chairman can call a board member out of order for going off topic, off subject, on the agenda.
I just don't know how many times you have to say it.
I was talking about the.
No, you weren't. Mr. Shugart?
Do I have, can I have opportunity just to talk about the environment?
As long as you're talking about the environment.
I will talk about the environment.
We're not talking about anything else.
And I will talk about putting facts out of the board, because I think it's important for the public to hear this. This is how the superintendent was made aware of an environmental concern. I received a letter on February eighth from NC Deaner, and it was in reference to a phone call from Ms. Baldwin, Ms. Baldwin, okay? And respectfully, you stated this positively, that you made that phone call. Phone call didn't come to the superintendent, it went to NC Deaner. The letter that I received from NC Deaner insinuated that Martin County Schools was in the process of placing a thirty million dollar STEM high school on the property of one twenty-eighth Bingham Road. There's a reason that I continue to emphasize, we don't reside on one twenty-eighth Bingham Road, we reside on one seventy-five Bingham Road. So I think you could give the superintendent a little flexibility there, in that when I receive a letter with an accusation that I know is completely false, we've never had any intention of taking any building project across the road. So that's how the information came to me. It took actually three weeks, Mr. Fox, you can help me with this, because once we received it, we were in response to NC Deaner. It took that length of time for a representative of North Carolina Deaner to come to our site. We physically, Mr. Fox, myself, Mr. Quat, walked the property to make sure that NC Deaner understood that we had no intent, first off, to build a thirty million dollar high school. That figure is closer to a renovated five million dollar figure at the max, a renovated high school here inside this building on one seventy-five Bingham Road. So, Ms. Baldwin, again, respectfully, in response to your accusation that I didn't get back in touch with you, there was a time lag, because I thought there was just a confusion regarding the information. Once the information was clarified, and anyone's welcome to talk to NC Deaner, anyone's welcome to get in their car and visit NC Deaner, they're going to verify. I have the emails right here, I'll be glad to share the public information. I think you're going to find out that once we got clarification, and we realized what the situation actually was, again, what the facts were, that that response came to not only you, Ms. Baldwin, but it went to the entire board, again, based upon the emails that I have in front of me. I appreciate you letting me just clarify that, because I thought it needed some clarification.
I would also appreciate the opportunity to clarify Dr. Baldwin's statement. NC Deaner had no, that nobody was monitoring this site, not a new carload had been sent to Raleigh to get those four file boxes. That's why, as you stated earlier, Dr. Baldwin, she said, she didn't know of any issues at one seventy-five Bingham Road, because she had to send to Raleigh to get the boxes to find out if there were issues. She did determine that it was part of the one twenty-eight Bingham Road hazardous site. I know her letter, she was confused about the address, because one twenty-eight Bingham is the address for the hazardous waste site location. She, again, I believe there was an attempt to muddy the waters with that information. It has been clarified, and the thirty million dollar amount came about because this amount of money was sent to the county commissioners as a request for future plans for facilities for Martin County Schools. In the total, which I had clarified by Ms. Parker, our chief financial officer, for the different projects, including the STEM high school, I believe, is in there. At the time, it's most unfortunate, because it should have come to the board for our approval before it went to the county commissioners. We had no knowledge of this thirty million dollars in budget plan.
Ms. Baldwin, you can hold it off.
I'm trying to explain the discrepancy. When I saw that amount, I thought it was for the STEM high school, because no one had broken it down, and it was not explained to the board.
And no one asked a question, and that's not all. Please ask questions. If you ask questions, I give you.
I only found out about the thirty million dollars because I went to the county commissioners' retreat and got the handout there.
Okay, all right, we're going to stop right here. Ms. Baldwin, I would just say that I appreciate you bringing this to the attention of the school system. It was with that, it was analyzed, and we've been presented with the information today, and I think it clearly shows that we have a safe building at this time.